Do you have a tight shot of the mayor?
Yeah, so what I'll do is I'll pick that shot, that's his shot. And we switch back, that's the live screen, or the livestream screen. And we can, you can also crow that. So, so the next time if it comes back, it remembers that shot. How you stored, how you stored the zoom.
Well, yeah, that's not gonna happen.
We wanna push that up a little bit. And then this will tell you. Your bit rate, how much time's allowed. What microphone you're using. I'm using an AVO microphone, so I'm gonna switch to me. And then also I can see the cameras, this way it totally runs itself. And I'm gonna do, um... Change the audio. So I'm gonna dial that back down to the iPad audio. Now it's using the direct feed from there. And you can see it's showing, it's got a little audio. So we can boost it. Now when you're in that screen, it won't let you do anything else. Like you can't select shots. So you're like, oh, gotta switch back. So now you can control the shots. Let me drop that out.
Very cool.
Go for it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna unplug that. That's, so I can hear to make sure that it's getting audio back from the unit. You can't, I, I do have another adapter that lets you monitor the audio.
Oh, okay.
What's taken in.
So...
Yeah.
So that takes that shot?
Yeah.
That takes that shot.
Now if you wanna build more shots, you can. You can just go in here, tap on the screen, and then it'll automatically select it. You just tap and hold, you know? If I wanted to, just tap. Oh, you gotta go to a shot first, and then now you can... If it's too close to another shot...
Okay.
It may not, so what you can do is, you don't like that shot? Now I've taken that shot out, you just hold it.
There we go.
Yep, so now if you wanna zoom in tighter, zoom in tighter.
So saying if they show something on the video...
And I, I can say, you can do that with this shot. And pull. There we go. So that shot right there, probably don't wanna store that one, just 'cause we're gonna probably need one, bring that up to, uh... So... See it's stored where we left, we left it, so... I guess you could put another preset up higher, and then drag it down.
I'll set up here. Oh, nope. Alright, so there we go.
So what I'll do is I'll get on here.
So how do I go back to my wide shot?
Okay, if you wanna pick, uh, that right there is the Insta-wide shot. So it kicks you back out to, you can just pick whatever wide shot.
So this is our speaker.
Yep.
This is the left side of the speaker, this is the right side.
You could drag that a little bit over here, wide, open that up a little more.
That one's the mayor. That one's the speaker.
Yeah, now you have to drag that down. Now that should store that.
Yeah, it leaves it up there. That's weird.
I think, yeah, there is a trick to do, well, maybe 'cause they're close proximity to each other.
So how do we get rid of that?
You just hold down? Okay, now that, that's gone.
Okay. So if we, if we play something, we can just pan that one?
Yeah, you can just pan, move it up. So make sure we got audio. Do the competence test on the actual stream.
So for the legal women voters, are you gonna be there to set up?
No. Oh, I'm gonna be, I'm leaving that the night before, actually, so I'm gonna get with you and get you a real, if we can even run a couple tasks with it, so you're totally gonna figure this out. Plus you need to go in and probably figure out where to set everything. Yeah, the audio, much better on this time, I can totally hear what's going on, so...
Didn't they make a little, like, bonus battery thing, don't they?
Yes, they do, and that's like another, it's almost the same price as the camera. It's like, uh, two ninety. But it gives you ten hours of battery. This one right here will do the same thing. It only runs an hour.
It's a little overexposed, is there, can you...
Yeah, here, let's fix that real quick. Okay, you go under the little three dots, and you go under the cogwheel, the advanced settings, and you change the, it will let you do auto-adjust. And that, it does fair, but it doesn't do, I wouldn't say it's a foolproof.
Gets bad?
Yeah, see now it's, it's toning down a little. Yeah, those lights are just, really... I guess if you... Yeah, zoom it down and not get the lights in. And if you use two fingers, it does, it zooms fast. So if you need to move something real quick, you use two fingers to zoom. If you wanna just nice and easy, you just kinda move it where you want. And the speed of how you move it is how fast it moves.
So it came back to that original thing?
Yeah.
If you wanna save the...
Yeah, then you'd have to, like, put a, like, a static hold.
So how do I get it to stay?
You're gonna have a preset, you have to tap a preset.
Oh, okay.
And then you zoom out to the level that you want.
Did it take that?
Oh, it did.
It will.
It didn't, I don't think you set your zoom max, max zoom level.
Alright, so, we'll just go back to that. So how do I get rid of one without switching to it?
Just hold, hold down.
Call a meeting to order. And the first item is, I think we ought to have a moment of silence for what's happened in Las Vegas and further country. Okay. Thank you. Okay. First item is our consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions concerning the consent agenda?
Well, on the minutes, the only question I had was that left Cory off being here last time.
Yeah, put him back on.
We need to show that he was here.
He probably didn't even see that, did he?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Other than that, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, do we have a second? Well, the, the motion was to approve the consent agenda. And we do have a second. So if there's no questions, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion passes eight to zero. Under recognition of Vister's announcement, Bob has two announcements to make.
Um, after Dennis Call up here before the Guardian Body, I was asked at that time to review the contract that was signed by him and the Amber Meadows project. Contract was prepared by Gilmore and Bell out of Wichita and obligated the ESCRO agent, First American Title, to return the ESCRO deposit to Mr. Call. If he executed a deed to the real estate back to the city. If he did this on June fifth, fifth, two thousand seventeen, the ESCRO funds were released pursuant to the contract. I apologize if the Guardian Body was not informed, the city was contractually obligated to return the funds, so that is the first announcement. Second one is on February twentieth, we met, and we entered a contract with EB Construction as having its construction manager at risk on the Grizzly Bear Expansion and the reintroduction of bison to the zoo. We once again met last Friday on the twenty-ninth with Representatives, Representative EB, PEC, and the city's architectural front. Also present was Catherine Opey representing the Dorothy Morrison Foundation.
The cost for designing the Grizzly Bear Expansion was eight hundred and seventy, it's eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Two hundred and ninety dollars, that's as it's designed. The city had a little under seven hundred thousand set aside for the project, but after reviewing the project, Catherine Opey indicated that the Dorothy Morrison Trust would provide funds necessary to fund the Grizzly Bear Expansion as it's designed in full. Since it is important to try to complete much of this project this winter while the bears are harvesting, they don't like to be working around the sleeping or waiting for the bear. The project was not moved forward under the prior contract. Except for the authorized change orders, the city has limited costs at eight seventy-seven, two ninety. Anything over that, the builder is at risk. Anything below that, we get the savings. If the costs come in below, we get the savings, as I said. Since there exists a contract that's fully funded, this matter will go ahead, uh, as, as soon as possible. So again, the contract... On the next agenda for the architect to oversee the construction, I'll bring that in at that point. We'll be reporting on the Bison Project fence in the near future, and I wanna give my thanks and the city's thanks to Catherine Opey and Dorothy Morrison.
Thank you, Bob.
I wonder if there's a little bit more clarification on this, uh, ESCRO agreement? Is that money returned to the region too, or does it go back to the company?
It goes back to the investor, Dennis Call.
It goes back to the investor, so did we write him a check to them?
No, it was, it was all placed in ESCRO, just a whole...
We never got the money.
We never got the money.
We didn't get the money in the first place?
No. Okay. Do we have any committee, uh, councilman reports? Okay, tonight I'm going to appoint a committee to interview police chief applicants, and also this committee will review the proposals for the Police Department Management and compensation studies. And on this committee from the council, I'm gonna have Vicki Bearman and Joel Jackson. And then I'm gonna have Val Sulter, Christina Hayes, Shawna Schaefer, Scott Keeler, and Charlie Sukie. And we will not be coming back just next week with everything, so, I mean, next meeting. It's gonna take a little while to go through this. So that will be the committee. Okay, applicants, do we have at the present time?
We've got the first one today.
We've got the first one today.
And that's of a local?
Yeah. Yes. It's only been posted locally. Okay, item number three, economic development report, Jan.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the last quarter of, or almost to the end of the year. Um, I just wanna give you a couple items of what we were working on throughout the month of September. And first of all, I had told you that Casey Humber and I had been invited to the Mid-America Association of State Transportation Officials, uh, the Subcommittee on Highway Transportation last week. And, uh, so we gave a presentation on our transload facility. Um, and they always tell a good speaker that you better know exactly who's in the audience, uh, because as we were giving this presentation, there was a gentleman in the back, just kept nodding his head and nodding his head, and I'm thinking, well, who is this guy? So lo and behold, I found out that amazingly enough, he is an official with GE. And so I went up and introduced myself, obviously, and, uh, he said, hey, I know all about your project. And I said, you certainly could've gotten up and, and helped us with that presentation. But, um, basically really thanked him for choosing Great Bend and for having GE come here. Uh, you know, we've got fifteen hundred wind component pieces, um, on the ground around here right now, uh, with, with lots more to come. So, uh, again, always know your audience, I guess, and when you're a speaker. Uh, just to let you know, in September, we did have another very, very successful Kids Act Day. You know, we do this for the fourth graders every year, and I know they look so forward to it. Um, and I think, uh, it's still one of the coolest things that we do, uh, throughout the, throughout the year. We have ribbon cuttings for Maurices, they have redesigned their current location, it looks very, very nice. Uh, and then we had a really cool company called GB2Go. So if you ever want somebody to come and pick up your dinner or your lunch, uh, and deliver it to you, uh, they do a great job of that, we've used them a couple times. And then obviously, there's many activities throughout the year for our young professionals. Uh, but we really had a great event over at the Field House. And Julie Spray has just done a wonderful job with that, uh, with that facility and, and all the new business. So we had a great activity there that night. Um, I have been working with Martin on the application for the runway, and, uh, we certainly are going to, uh, submit a letter of support, uh, obviously for that project. Uh, I also worked with one new prospect who I think is, uh, is, is very, is very solid. Uh, hopefully they're gonna be here within the next couple weeks, uh, creating fifteen new jobs, uh, a service company, and, um, I think it's gonna really be a great addition to our, our, our community. Um, I did work with one prospective retail company that Dana had suggested. Um, sad to say, they are not interested in Great Bend. Um, I told Dana that earlier, but, uh, we still will continue to show them, because I told them that we had the perfect, ideal location, Dana, of which you had recommended. So, uh, we'll kinda stay on that one a little bit, too. Uh, and then we worked with a couple other projects, uh, that are, are very, very long-term projects. Um, and last but certainly not least, I know a lot of you have been interested in the Tyson Plant, uh, that you've probably heard throughout, uh, you know, the past couple weeks, um, about the, um, situation in Tonganoxi. And, um, so I've talked to a couple of you and a number of other business people throughout the community, and I really just wanna tell you kinda what we found out. Um, first of all, the Tyson Plant, um, has huge requirements. And, uh, this was kind of a very unusual situation for us here in the state of Kansas, because normally, these types of projects always go through the Department of Commerce. For some reason, I, I'm not really for certain, um, but this went through the Department of Ed. And, um, I, I was a little bit perplexed, because I, I, I was uncertain if they knew all about site selection, um, and, and really how to go about all of these types of things. Um, so anyway, the lead person was their marketing person, who I did talk with. Um, I got all the specifications for the, for the plant. Um, they are huge, they are really, really big. Um, so, um, just a couple, a little bit of the background of what they want, they want this huge growers, they call it a growers' network, um, of different chicken farms throughout a certain amount of area. The, the land requirements for them are probably, I don't know, thirty-five hundred acres of land for just that network. Um, and then they have a major site location, uh, for the production, um, that, that has to have adequate utilities. Um, and then their ability to recruit and staff the human capital within thirty miles of this location. Um, and basically, they were creating fifteen hundred jobs. Um, they were very interested in biosecurity, uh, the amount of water that was available, and wastewater disposal. So I'm telling you, um, I lost a lot of sleep over this project, uh, because I just kept thinking, um, you know, I know that we always say that we have water, uh, which we do, but what their requirements for water are, um, literally would, would double what we currently use. Um, thank goodness, we have a great guy in Charlie Sukie and Charlie Kim over the last Friday, and we talked through this, um, all over this, um, just about the water. So, just to give you an idea, um, currently, our city uses approximately six hundred million gallons of water a year. Um, it appears that this project would use about seven hundred million gallons of water per year, which would more than double our usage. And we're allotted about one point two billion gallons, um, from the Division of Water Resources and the state of Kansas. Um, Tyson is looking, would be willing to look at, at, um, getting their own water supplied, i.e. digging wells. Um, but in order for this to happen, someone would have to get up, give up some of their water rights around here. And, um, if you've talked to people that have water rights, um, Jolene's like, no, that's just not gonna happen. So anyway, uh, the other, the other, uh, element that, that I just kept really worrying about, I think, and I probably worry about this more than anything, um, is because of these fifteen hundred jobs, um, we did a little bit of research and found out that ju, they're looking for a thirty-mile radius, but we stepped out a little bit further and said, in a sixty-mile radius, right now, there are twelve hundred and thirty-three job postings within that sixty-mile radius. Um, the unemployment rate in Barton County and many of the surrounding areas is about three point nine percent. Um, so this means that if we add those other fifteen hundred jobs, um, I, I just can't even imagine what the impact would be, would be to the current business community. Um, there, there are companies that are looking for thirty, twenty, thirty, uh, employees, and, and they're having a tough time finding them. So I just think, um, again, I'm gonna come to the conclusion that probably this is a great project, Tyson is a great company, uh, it's a great project for the state of Kansas, but I just really don't think it's Great Bend's project. Again, because of the water, uh, the water demands and the workforce. You know, the last thing that we wanna do is jump into something, promising a company something, and then we can't deliver it. Um, and so I think that that's really kinda what this project is all about. Uh, but we really will continue to seek new business prospects, which we then can handle. Um, but more likely, there're gonna be other projects that require fewer jobs, and we can still grow our community, uh, with smaller job sectors like this fifteen that we're, that we're looking at now. Um, and again, we don't wanna deplete our water resources. Um, I know that Charlie is, he just, he was just, um, so full of great information, so, um, I know that he can talk about the wastewater and the water usage as well. Uh, but I just, I, I know that a lot of you are concerned about that. Um, like I said, I think it's a great project, there will be others that will come. Um, I just don't think this is ours. Um, and I think that there will be one out there that will be ours. So with that, I stand ready to answer any questions if you have some.
Yes. Have we made any overtures to them at all about even looking at us?
Well, um, I did, um, but in, in addition to that, I know that there were twenty other communities that were, were also asking that. Um, you know, I, I guess before we really threw our hat in the ring, I wanted to make sure that we could, number one, even deliver on goods. So, and I know, and I remember talking to somebody, can't remember who it was, um, saying, well, let's just go for it, and then have them turn us down versus us turning them down. I, I don't know that that's the right way to do it either.
Well, I'm wondering if we make overtures toward them, even though they wouldn't accept us, would other companies then perhaps give us a look?
Good question, Brock, I, that, that's a good question. I, um... Here's, here's what you need to know about the state of Kansas. They know pretty much what every, what every city in the state can do. They know, you know, what their economy looks like, they know what their workforce is, they know what their employment, they, they know about every community. Um, and if they feel that there is an opportunity for us, um, I know that they would, but they would certainly go to bat for us. But again, I just, I, I, those, those two elements of this project were just so overwhelming to me that, um, I just didn't feel like it was ours. Any other questions? Vicki, picture? Any other questions?
I answered my question.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you, and again, thanks for everybody that...
I have several questions other than Tyson, I mean, like...
Sure.
Under the, the new operation that's out at the airport that we have, now they're bringing the windmills in and out.
Right.
How many employees do they have out there?
Right, we added fifteen new jobs, uh, with that, and, um, that means that there's, guys, I had that. Um, I think there were nine with a cartage company, um, and then there were four with KTS, and then Waco Supply Chain Services at four. So what, nine, thirteen, fourteen, I know it was total fifteen.
And then we're talking about the railroad, bringing some people in that are gonna be working out there also?
They are.
How many?
Waco Supply Chain Services is a part of Waco Companies, um, but they do kinda the logistics part of it, um, and, um, I think, so I think they added four, three or four new jobs with just supply chain services. Then KTS, which is, is really the operator, um, of our transload facility, they added four as well. And that, and they're a subsidiary of Sherway Construction.
Okay, so total wise, what, how many new employees do we have?
Fifteen. Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Right.
One additional question.
Sure.
My understanding is that the county has placed some two thousand dollar penalty on trucks going in and out of those if they use Tenth Street Extended?
You know, Brock, I, I'm not sure that, yeah. I don't know what exactly the, um... Yeah, I don't know what exactly the fine is. But before those, any of those transports start their trip, they have to literally map it out highway by highway. And the route that they must take is once they get to Tenth and Patton, they have to turn south on Patton and then come back up north to Airport Road.
But there are instances where the trucks have been either lost or confused and went out there. Have they had to pay that $2,000 penalty?
You know, I don't know.
Is that an ordinance passed by, not by the city, obviously, but by the county?
I think it's either by the state or the county.
Not by the city, or it would have passed here, wouldn't it?
No, it's not the city.
It's not a city.
It must be county. Yeah, it would be a resolution, not an ordinance, and it could be the state could find them for making the long turn.
Right, for going off the route.
Going off the route.
Yeah.
Can we find out which penalty that is?
County due that jury seems like a slap towards them.
Yeah, I think so. That's why I want to know. You got it. Okay, any other questions?
Any other questions?
All right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number four, a baitment request, Tom?
No policy.
Good evening.
Evening.
Tonight I have three requests for a baitment.
Which one went off?
They all did. Okay, so it is for 2406 18th Street for accumulation of refuse. As you can see by the pictures, it's kind of hard to describe what's there. It's just a little bit of everything scattered all over the property. Notices have been sent and received, and I'm ready to proceed on this. And the next one is 409 Almond. There's a couple of tires there in that first picture by the fence, and then back in the corner of the backyard, there's a whole pile full of automobile parts and bicycles that are in pieces, and just scrap lumber and scrap metal, all sorts of stuff back there. And then the third one, 1324 10th Street. Now, this is a business that sells tires. So I can understand that they're going to have tires there, but these tires have been there for months. And plus, they have a whole bunch of other junk and scrap lumber and that sort of thing scattered around on the property. So to that end, I would like to introduce Resolutions 100217-A, B, and C.
Okay. Have a motion for resolutions 00100217A, B, and C? Okay, does anyone have any questions to call?
Yeah, did we get rid of the 1017s? Let me take yours. The one, has that been taken care of? 143417, did you call it?
Yes, yes, it has. The vehicle that was in question, Ari, is gone.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six. No, item number five, Charlie. It is your turn. Okay. Item number five. Director of Public Works Charlie Sukie is passing out our snow removal policy.
2017, 2018. Yeah, he's got one.
And...
Nothing has really changed on this. If you do have questions, you can call my office anytime. If you have any questions or concerns, just give me a call, and I can answer those, and we can work through it.
Okay. And at the next meeting, why, we'll approve the policy or end this or discuss it. Thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome.
Okay, now item six. Serial malt beverage license and City Car Shona Shafer will report.
Argon Rebels has applied for a one-day serial malt beverage license for the Dingle Pianos event on October 7th at the Event Center. All requirements have been met, along with their payment. We would recommend council approval.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any questions? Or is this going to be?
The Event Center.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes eight to zero. Item seven is request for uses city parking lots for the truck and recreation activities. Darren Sinclair here. This is Darren to tell us about it.
Thank you for letting me ask for this request. I'm a member of the Church of Christ. It's the building just to the southwest of here. We're planning on having a Halloween-type activity, the Day of the Zulu. Prior to that, we request that we can reserve the parking lot. I do want to make a couple of corrections here. Instead of 3:00 to 4:00, we request 1:00 to 4:00 in just the south half of the parking lot. We just pass out some candy, and we're just trying to provide something safety for the kids. Our street, part of our congregation, wouldn't be appropriate for that.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? No questions?
I assume that will have to be Martin blocked off.
Yeah, please block it off. Is the parking lot right behind you? Right here, in the south half of it.
Just the south half of it.
Just the south half of it is what he asked for. Okay.
Is there much activity back there? Is that outside? Is it pretty open?
Yeah. Okay. No other questions? I'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion, approve it.
Okay. No other questions? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Okay, item number eight is off. We hit the wrong, it's supposed to be 7:50 per month and 12:50 thereafter, right, Bob?
Right.
And so we're going to rewrite the contract, and we'll have it here to approve.
It's 1,200.
1,200.
1,200. Well, you guys are going to get it right. Okay, so item eight is not there. Okay, item nine is to repair the hiking bike trail on the flood control levee. And Steve Pringle is here. There you are.
Not that hard to miss.
Well, you're behind.
Yeah.
I bet. Your head's shining a little.
You know, I could, I've got three pages here I could talk to you about. But one thing you see in this room is love for Great Bend, Barton County, its appearance and its amenities that it offers. And what I'm here about is the bike trail is deteriorated. It's no longer... Well, I guess I really need to ask, is there anybody familiar with the hiking bike trail?
Yep.
And what it offers, which is a nice ride without traffic and walk and the wildlife and everything, just completely, has deteriorated through lack of maintenance and shifting to a point where you can't ride a bike on it anymore. Most people, the bike organizations, and you go to these bike rides, and people talk about it, say, I can't even ride it anymore. Well, we originally, I talked with Aileen Owen about the repairs. And she got with the head of the Parks Department. They went out there with venture, and they condemned it, more or less, and said it needed an overlay, and the price tag was $250,000. You know, it was brought up to you guys, and you acknowledged it, and you also said, you know, we really ought to look at some grants to help fund it. Well, the grants were checked, and there's grants for new trails, but not for maintenance. So then I got involved again with Aileen, Bob, Kip Spray, and then we had a meeting with the heads of the city department, and what can we do? You know, $250,000 is a chunk. Kip Spray came up with the idea of a proposal of doing it in phases. And you could do three or four phases. Phase one would be the milling of the cracks and the repair of them, make it operational. And then at later dates, and that could last up to five to six years with proper maintenance. And then, you know, at later dates, look at the final repairs. The first phase would be a little over $68,000. That would get it operational again. It would look nice again, and be ridable again, functional. And then, you know, we could review it at later dates to, you know, either do the whole overlay, or do it in quarters or halves, or however we see how fit. One of the things that was brought up at that meeting was funding. I think, you know, everything I did gather is that the funding may be able to be found. But basically, it's on your guys' shoulder to, you know, approve going forward. And Kip Spray said if it's approved, he can do it before the winter and do the dirt work that goes with it, so there's no structural integrity of the dike. And it'll give it the winter and the spring for the grass and the dirt to reset, so there's no structural problems. So, yes?
With this repair, what they will do is cut these cracks out nine inches each side. And then they will repair those cracks, overlay that. That will give it some last for quite a bit of time. And what he's talking about is on the integrity of the dike, that dike comes down quite extensive, and they have to take your equipment up. So that may deteriorate some of that area. So they'll plant it and blanket it so that the seed will hold. And then, and this has to be done because of the Corps of Engineers.
Right.
You have to do this. You cannot let this go because the Corps of Engineers, that is one of their requirements. So this one...
The other thing is, you know, what we call phase one, has to be done regardless before any repairs are done. So we're not throwing money at something that's not going to have to be done anyway. It's just phase one of the total project, and that creates an operational ability of the traffic, you know, the trail.
I went out and I walked, not all of it, but most of it. And he's correct. If anybody wants to take a nice leisurely walk, and just, it's very calming, and it's beautiful. I mean, you have an open space, but it's green, it's gorgeous. But anyway, these cracks are quite sufficient. They are not small. They are very large. I took some pictures on my phone, and I could put my hand, and they were this. And then on some, I took my foot. And so it was half my foot across that these cracks were. These aren't little things.
And they just jarred you on a bike.
They're quite...
And Dale Hogs, a bike rider, he can attest to that. And like I say, you go down to the bike shop, and they tell you, our group doesn't even ride it anymore. It's in such deteriorated shape that it's too hard on the bikes.
So it's an asphalt?
Yeah, it's an asphalt track.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
If I remember, Bob, if I remember a long, long time ago, talking about the levee and the dike, the people accessing it, then if we allow it to deteriorate, that could also have a collateral effect of, it'd be able to have to pay more flood insurance.
Well, yeah, and that, I can answer that a little bit longer than probably should, but that's, if I laid this coat and finish on everybody's desk. And number two and three, well, number three, erosion blanket. If, when they do this work, they'll go up with a milling head on the front of a bobcat or some truck vehicle, and they have to pull up, the cracks run across the asphalt, so they have to pull up next to it and mill it off. When they do that, they'll disturb the grass and the dirt on the sides, so we want them to fill that in, put grass seed in it, put a blanket over, so we don't get any erosion. There's only about a foot of topsoil on this. Underneath that is some sand, and then there's some mixture underneath that. There's probably nobody more protective than the flood control levee than I am, except for Chewie, the guy who takes care of it.
Yeah, that's correct.
And he's very protective, and he's very concerned about that. So we've taken into account, and that costs $8,966.40 on this estimate. We've taken into account the destruction we'll do to the levee itself by fixing this and try to undo that. If the topsoil washes away on the riverside, we'll have the breach of the dike. And that's where we've been, we've been trying to fight that ever since we put the flood control levee in.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
I could see where the water in these big cracks would also start erosion right down the sides of the levee. Do things happen that the bike shop would complain about when they usually ride down on the riverbeds? So...
I'm just telling you.
Maybe some of the people that sell bikes do.
Well, and that's true.
Well, and even the bike rallies, if they have, they would use this. But the condition that there is, they won't utilize it at all. With this being such an asset, is it worth looking at maybe doing concrete at some point rather than asphalt?
Right now, we don't have the money for concrete. Right now, what we're trying to do is repair it. This is a repair right now. And it's a repair that would last several years. And then there could be money, kind of put it back over the years so that you can get a different service on there. But for right now, it is a repair. So, anyway, anyone on the council still have any questions?
Is it, so budget-wise, where does that put us as something new that's not in the budget?
It's not in the budget. We have some funds that we found in the budget from contingencies and some savings that Scott had on the purchase of a new garbage truck. But we're going to have some money in the Parks Department that we can transfer into this. That's where we'd have to get the money out of contingencies and the cost savings that Scott Keever realized when he purchased the truck.
The other thing is, Steve, do you have any idea how many people utilize that over the years?
Yeah, you know, there's never any head count. When, you know, all I can tell you is, you know, and I just started riding more this year, some longer bike rides. Everyone I go to, when you talk to people, they tell you, you know, we used to come over and ride it. We don't anymore. It's so bad that we don't ride it anymore. I was out there with Aileen, and some people came by and rode it on a mountain bike, heavy-duty mountain bike, because that's how bad the cracks are. And when you go out there, you see people walking it, riding it. And, you know, as, it's something that's listed on the internet. If you look on Wikipedia and Great Bend, it talks about the bike track. You know, just general bike and bike track information. They say, you know, it's great for exercise, mental well-being, attracted to the communities. You know, it's a good thing to have in its operation, and it's something that everybody can be proud of.
Okay.
Sounds like a deal with the water pipes.
Any, any other, now, questions?
I think they need to be done.
Okay.
I think it's an asset for our community that's, quite honestly, you know, we just, we just, I don't ever do that. I don't have to go there. So I don't see it until somebody like this comes up and says, hey, we've got an asset here. We need to take care of it. And if we've got the funds available, I think we need to do it. Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Any other questions?
One question of Dale. Dale, do you have any idea? I mean, I hear a big biker about how many people would use that?
We would use it on routes. You have, you take a short route, the Thursday night rides, we'd use it more often than we do because we ride our mountain, our road bikes at 110 pounds per square inch, little skinny tires. We'll pop them. People scratch them, they'll pop those little tires. So we don't ride it at all now.
The left command way, it's popping tire pads over their back. And then there's stickers around their own.
Yeah. And there's some other things we need to address, but this is a big thing.
We do a lot more than we do right now that we're fixing up. Can we work into this something so we will start budgeting?
Yes, yes.
And instead of having five years' debt.
That's part of the idea, is you start putting it back in your budget. So, okay. All right. Any other questions? Not? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm entertaining the motion for the jurors.
Don't move.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Return. All right, chiefs are down, ten to nothing. Everybody get hold.